Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor waterfront lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to our select board meeting. I'm the chair. It's going to be a couple minutes late, so I'm going to just get us started. Doug Brown, the vice chair. So I'd like to start the meeting, call to order, and ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the required law which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So do we really have anything in particular for recognition tonight? Do you have anything in mind that you recognize this week?
I would just suggest we wish everyone that's home for the holidays, that employees, students, clergy, everyone here in the room, really a wonderful Thanksgiving spirit and a good time coming up in the next week and then the holiday season.
That's a good one. Thank you. And any announcements?
Nope. We're going to be done before she gets here.
That's right. All right. And so now we'd have public comment if anyone's come tonight with any public comments that they'd like to make. It has to be something that's not on our agenda. And two minutes.
Come right up to the mic.
There she is. Two minutes, you were right on it. Pass that back down.
Hi. Should I begin?
Yes, please introduce yourself.
I'm Martha Gilbert. I live in West Falmouth, and I have some comments about the West Falmouth Fire Station. I understand the West Falmouth Fire Station is to be closed permanently July 1st, 2020. I'm here tonight to strongly request the West Falmouth Fire Station stay open with improvements. If this is not possible, then it should stay open and staffed at least until a new fire station is operational. With this closure, I am concerned with the increase of emergency response time from virtually a few minutes to almost 10 minutes at best, as presented by the town at the West Falmouth Library on October 17th. Unfortunately, the response time and call volume data was collected in May and not during our busy summer season. A 10-minute response time is well above the nationally recommended six minutes. I am fearful that 10 minutes will be dramatically increased in July and August. Like many of my neighbors, I have chosen to live in West Falmouth partly because of the close proximity to a fire station. In my 23 years of living in West Falmouth, I've witnessed critical rescues performed by our local station. I value the safety and peace of mind our dedicated rescue workers provide out of station number four. However, this is not exclusively a West Falmouth problem. At the meeting stating above, I was told other areas of town would suffer and be left unstaffed when emergency help is required in West Falmouth. I am deeply concerned with the consequences this decision will have on all of Falmouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Anyone else for public comment? Okay.
And we have received a lot of letters with the same comment.
Great.
Or similar, I should say.
All right. Under summary of actions, licenses. Approve application for special one-day liquor license, FCTV televised musical event, 310 Dillingham Avenue, Thursday, 12:00, 5:19. Welcome.
Andrew Richards from FCTV. You have any questions about the application?
Do you want to just...oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, I think it's great that you're using the new space in such a variety of ways.
No, we're looking forward to getting as many people as we can into our new facility. This is one way we're doing that.
Great. Thank you. And do you want to just tell people a little bit about what it is, just so they...
Yeah, we're having a monthly musical event. It's called, I'll tell you exactly what it's called here. It's called the Falmouth Music Workshop from Studio 310, and it's going to be hosted by Falmouth's Pat Ryan. It's going to be a monthly concert series, so the first one is going to be on the 5th.
That's great. Any questions?
Note that we did get recommendations belatedly in support of this, so I think it's pretty clear.
So tell me again, is it live televised? Plus, you're going to have an audience there?
There would be an audience, right. There's tickets available online and at the door.
Okay.
And we'll be televised.
Okay. Very good. I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. We're actually two nights, so...
Yeah, so there's one for, I'll just read the second date off, same thing, approve application for special one-day liquor license, FCTV holiday party and silent auction, so something slightly different. 310 Dillingham Avenue, Thursday, 12:00, 12:19. I think the description is pretty clear.
I move approval.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, under administrative orders, re-execute conservation restriction for two portions of registered land on the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute Quissette Campus located at 360 Woods Hole Road, Falmouth. Mr. Johnson Staub, or Mr. Suso?
Madam Chair, I can just advise, we're contacted by attorney Bob Amen on behalf of HOE, asking that an earlier conservation restriction be approved a second time and re-executed for some legal purposes and not as well as before you this evening.
Great. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you know if that's the single page?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Execute conservation restriction for property located at 0 and 740 Terre Haute Drive, Falmouth. This is a 300 Committee restriction, Mr. Johnson Staub, or...
That's correct. Jessica Rittenhour is here as well.
You want to have them comment on it?
Yeah, if you just want to come up and just explain what it is. I mean, I know that it's pretty straightforward, but just for folks to understand what is happening.
Hi, thank you for the invitation to speak, Jessica Rittenhour, Executive Director of the 300 Committee Land Trust, and Victoria Lowell.
Yeah, I'm the property owner. I just wanted to make a comment after you, you could finish the business and then...
Okay. So just introducing what we're working on, Vicki has decided to donate land to the 300 Committee for permanent conservation. It's adjacent to BB Woods. So while the property Vicki's donating will be owned by the 300 Committee, it has public access and trails, so it essentially will function as somewhat of an expansion of BB Woods, which is a really rare opportunity for us to add contiguous land to that area. There happen to be two parcels. The total acreage of the two combined is 7.42 acres. The land, as I mentioned, will be owned by the 300 Committee. In this particular case, we're required to convey a conservation restriction to the compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. There's a Massachusetts state tax credit involved, which is a wonderful incentive program for landowners who choose to donate land for conservation. So that requires that additional layer of protection, the conservation restriction. So all ducks are in a row to complete this this year, and we thank Vicki and her family for making this wonderful gift to the 300 Committee and essentially to the people of Falmouth, because it will be open for all.
Really wonderful. Thank you. That is really a significant portion of land.
Well, land itself is quite rugged, so I think it's wonderful that it'll be in conservation, because it would be sort of brutal to develop it.
It's different marine area.
But I just wanted to make a comment about maybe the town does things better than it did in 1960. I, when we bought our house, we bought, there were 10 vacant acres behind it with a Terre Haute Drive layout going through it. And for, ever since we owned those 10 acres, we got two separate tax bills, one for the portion on the inside of Terre Haute Drive and one for the Buzzers Bay side of Terre Haute Drive. But when I went to give away the six acres, it had never been recorded up in Land Court. So I have spent over a year, and it still isn't done, it's still up in Land Court, trying to get that six acres extracted so that I could actually give it away. So I just think that, I'm sure the town maybe doesn't do business that way. The county at the behest of the town laid out the access, a little history, in 1960, because to get qualified for federal funds for Falmouth Hospital, they had to show that they had the potential for second access to the hospital. And then over time, it just gradually got built by people that were developing the land in between. So we're the last owners that, where it isn't developed, and of course, I'm very happy about that. But this, it was just, you know, 47 years of getting separate tax bills, it never occurred to me or anyone else that they weren't two legally separate lots, so.
Anything in Land Court, I hope the folks at Land Court are listening for the next time I have to deal with them. Land Court is sort of this really antiquated, old vestige in many ways that has just its own separate, just vocabulary, really.
Well, they lost the plan at one point, then they returned a check because they said they needed two separate checks, one for one department, one for another, so it's not an easy...I think our town government is much more responsive than they are, so thank you very much. I'm very happy to be able to do this.
For your persistence.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I guess this creates an access then for the folks in your neighborhood to get into BB Woods?
Well, informally, they already have, because the Terre Haute Drive layout, you could walk, there's more or less a path along it, and then you could get into BB Woods, but now you'll be able to go up the ridge and around too, so.
Okay.
I lived there so long before any development was in Sipolis and Highlands, we used to walk everywhere. So it's a little more constrained, but it's still really, really nice. And there, there's a couple, there's a couple of wetlands, and then this big ridge, so it's really nice.
You can get all the way to Peterson Farm from that area. I mean, all of that land is connected, so it's really...
And now we have the Kelly Access further down, so it's a, I see the Kelly Access used a lot, too, so it's good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to...
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We have vote to, excuse me, vote, or approve changes to the shellfish regulations for winter 2019-2020. Yes, our shellfish warden is here. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Chuck Martinson, Deputy Director of Marine and Environment and Shellfish Constable.
Constable, sorry, warden.
Sorry, whatever.
He looks tired.
All worse.
I don't know why. Would have a new baby or something?
Yeah. Thanks for having me this evening. Just wanted to see if we could possibly make some modifications to the regulations, which would ultimately allow for a greater harvest amount and more harvest days for oysters in West Falmouth Harbor. We did this, I believe, last year or the year before. We're back in the same position where we have such a tremendous resource over there that I don't want to see it become destroyed in the ice. So we, our intention would be to provide significant increase, double the amount of oysters allowed out of West Falmouth, and also allowing recreational harvesters to go on Wednesday. Normally, that area is only open on Fridays and Sundays, so open it on Wednesdays as well. And then addition into that, having five possible floating days when, if the weather had appeared to be taking a turn for the worse and it looked like there would ultimately be a die-off because of ice, we would allow some commercial harvest in there as well. I did leave that kind of open-ended, just to give, provide a little bit of leeway for myself in the event that it doesn't happen, or, you know, we need to accelerate that. I wish I could give you dates on that, but it's really not feasible. It's all about the weather, so.
Great.
Any questions if you have to take them?
No, it's good news.
Yeah.
It's actually beneficial in that we're getting some sequestered nitrogen out of that estuary, correct?
Correct, yes.
I mean, it's a benefit to the town, actually.
It sure is, yeah. We don't want to see them die there. We want to remove them for a number of purposes, including local food harvest, so hopefully enjoy the holidays.
And I always have, I always have folks who just have never really engaged in sort of, you know, recreational harvesting, but have interest in, because they hear us talk. What, if folks are interested in trying to be able to do that, what should they do? Do they have to have, just explain the process to them?
Yeah, so basically, they'd need to get a license at Town Hall, and obviously, they could come down to our office at any point, and we could kind of give them individual instructions, depending on where they live in town. There's areas in East Falmouth and West Falmouth that are both available, so it kind of depends on their schedule. But it starts with getting a permit at Town Hall, and then if they need more in-depth information, just come on down to the office at the harbor.
Great. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Give a second. All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Vote to authorize allocation of $50,000 from Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence Fund to support the agriculture, aquaculture, excuse me, nitrogen removal program. Excuse me. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Sure, I can speak to this. So this is a companion piece to a capital request that was approved a couple weeks ago at town meeting. And again, the board may recall setting rental fees for the aquaculture program, and this funding will enable us to purchase more of the equipment and facilitate a quicker start for the public-private partnership, where the private growers are getting their shellfish in the water and helping us to remove nitrogen.
Great. Any questions about this?
Just don't spend too much of that money, because I still got to clean up Mill Pond.
Motion to approve.
Help getting that.
Yeah, just to Doug's point, there's 1.6 remaining in the, in that fund, the AFC fund.
That should get you a little bit further.
Okay.
Great. I have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And there's nothing to sign on that, that's just an authorization.
Correct.
Special reoccurring recommended. We have Dive Into Recovery, Freezing For A Reason, Polar Plunge, Gosnell Inc., Falmouth Heights Beach, Saturday, January 4th, 2020. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Amanda Marcott. I'm the Director of Marketing and Alumni Relations at Gosnell. This is my colleague Anne and Michael. This is our third annual technical Freezing For A Reason. Every year, we get alumni and their family together to jump into the frigid cold ocean to raise awareness of our alumni program. 100% of the proceeds do benefit that program exclusively. It allows us to do things like, upcoming, we have an alumni holiday dinner where we invite alumni and their families to kind of get together, so.
Great. And if people are interested in attending or sponsoring somebody, what do they do?
So we were waiting for your approval first before we did anything. They can go right to Gosnell.org. On there, we'll have our events page, and they can find the Polar Plunge on there.
Great.
Or, oh, the date.
Was that not the date you wanted, January 4th?
We'd like to change it, if that's okay. If we could change it to the 18th.
Okay, so your original rain date you want as the actual date?
Correct.
Because who needs a rain date? You're going to get wet anyway.
Right. And saving spots for all of you.
And the 4th is kind of after the holidays.
Exactly.
Yeah. So what I will do is strike the rain date and change this to...
And then if there is any way to have that inclement weather date for the, again, two weeks later, just as we had it set up before.
Could you have picked a colder day?
I know.
Okay, let me just...
It's always going to be cold.
It's going to be in February, right?
All right, so the 18th, it would be February 1st.
Yes, please.
Is that Super Bowl Sunday?
It looks like that is a Saturday, the 2nd, so it's the day before. Super Bowl weekend, so hopefully you won't need it as an inclement weather. So you're asking for February 1st as the...
Yes, please.
Okay. With those changes...
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With those changes?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We are a little bit early for our public hearings, so why don't we just take ten minutes to do some license renewals? Okay, I will just read them off, and if someone will consistently.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move right through.
All alcohol restaurant, forty-one seventy seventy-one Water Street. Ninety-nine Restaurant, thirty Davis Straits. Anchor Ale House, one hundred Davis Straits. Baron Boots Gastro Pub, two eighty-five Main Street. British Beer Company, two sixty-three Grand Avenue. Chappaqua Grill, four ten West Falmouth Highway. Casa Vallarta, seventy Davis Straits. DJ's Family Sports Pub, eight seventy-two Main Street. Epic Oyster, seventy County Road. Glass Onion, thirty-seven North Main Street. Golden Swan, three twenty-three, three twenty-five Main Street. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, three twenty-seven Gifford Street. Josh's at Davisville, three three nine East Falmouth Highway. Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, two seventy-three Main Street. Paul's Pizza and Seafood, thirty-seven Allen Avenue. Kohog Republic Dive Bar, ninety-seven Spring Bars Road. Simply Divine Pizza, two seventy-one Main Street. Sopranos Casino by the Sea, two eighty-six Grand Avenue. Water Street Kitchen, fifty-six Water Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All Alcohol Club, Cape Cod Curling Club, thirty-seven Highfield Drive. Cape Verdean Club of Falmouth, one twenty-six Sandwich Road. Falmouth Elks Lodge, twenty-three eighty, one four Palmer Avenue. Green Pond Yacht Club, three sixty-six Minot Road. Midway Trap and Skeet Club, two eighty-four Old Meeting House Road. Woods Hall Golf Club, one thirty Quistit Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All Alcohol Inholder, three eleven Gifford Street. DBA Coonamessett Inn, three eleven Gifford Street. Delaware North, DBA Seacrest Beach Hotel, three fifty Quaker Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All Alcohol Package Store, John's Liquor Store, seven twenty-nine Main Street. Kenyon's Market Incorporated, seven sixty-nine East Falmouth Highway. North Falmouth Liquors, three sixty-two North Falmouth Highway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt restaurant, Falmouth Cinema Pub, one thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway. Ryan Family Amusement, twenty-three Town Hall Square.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine, malt and cordials restaurant, Dogs and Hogs, seven eight eight one Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt package stores, MPG Corp., DBA Rapid Refill, four thirty-five Palmer Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, aye. Farmer Winery, Cape Cod Winery, four Oxbow Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Farmer Brewery, Aquatic Brewery, twenty-four Spring Bars Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Common Victoire License, forty-one seventy seventy-one Water Street. Dogs and Hogs, seven eighty-one Main Street. Falmouth Cinema Pub, one thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway. Ryan Family Amusements, twenty-three Town Hall Square. Our Falmouth Elks Lodge, twenty-three eighty-one forty Palmer Ave. Green Pond Yacht Club Incorporated, three sixty-six Minot Road. Woods Hall Golf Club, one thirty Quistit Avenue. Ninety-nine Restaurant, thirty Davis Straits. Anchor Ale House, one hundred Davis Straits. Baron Boots Gastro Pub, two eighty-five Main Street. British Beer Company, two sixty-three Grand Avenue. Chappaqua Grill, four ten West Falmouth Highway. Casa Vallarta, seventy Davis Straits. DJ Sports Pub, Family Sports Pub, eight seventy-two Main Street. Epic Oyster, seventy County Road. Glass Onion, thirty-seven North Main Street. Golden Swan, three twenty-three, three twenty-five Main Street. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, three twenty-seven Gifford Street. Josh's at Davisville, three thirty-nine East Falmouth Highway. Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, two seventy-three Main Street. Paul's Pizza and Seafood, thirty-seven Allen Avenue. Kohog Republic Dive Bar, ninety-seven Spring Bars Road. Simply Divine Pizza, two seventy-one Main Street. Sopranos Casino by the Sea, two eighty-six Grand Avenue. Water Street Kitchen, fifty-six Water Street. Pie in the Sky, ten Water Street. Thai Kitchen, two fifty eighteen T-Ticket Highway. Starbucks? Oh, sorry, Starbucks Coffee Company, eleven Davis Straits. Three eleven Gifford Street, DBA Coonamessett Inn, three eleven Gifford Street. Delaware, DBA Seacrest Beach Hotel, three fifty Quaker Road. Cape Cod Winery, four Oxbow Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Inholder License, three eleven Gifford Street. DBA Coonamessett Inn, twenty-nine Main Street. That doesn't seem right. I think it's supposed to be three eleven Gifford Street.
Right, yes.
And Delaware North, DBA Seacrest Beach Hotel, three fifty Quaker Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertainment, forty-one seventy seventy-one Main, seventy-one Water Street. Falmouth Cinema Pub, one thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway. Cape Verdean Club of Falmouth, one twenty-six Sandwich Road. Green Pond Yacht Club Incorporated, three sixty-six Minot Road. Woods Hall Golf Club, one thirty Quistit Avenue. Anchor Ale House, one hundred Davis Straits. Baron Boots Gastro Pub, two eighty-five Main Street. British Beer Company, two sixty-three Grand Avenue. Casa Vallarta, seventy Davis Straits. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, three twenty-seven Gifford Street. Josh's at Davisville, three thirty-nine East Falmouth Highway. Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, two seventy-three Main Street. Kohog Republic Dive Bar, ninety-seven Spring Bars Road. Simply Divine Pizza, two seventy-one Main Street. Sopranos Casino by the Sea, two eighty-six Grand Avenue. Pie in the Sky, ten Water Street. Third, three eleven Gifford Street. DBA Coonamessett Inn, three eleven Gifford Street. Delaware North, DBA Seacrest Beach Hotel, three fifty Quaker Avenue. Cape Cod Winery, four Oxbow Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sunday Entertainment, forty-one seventy seventy-one Water Street. British Beer Company, two sixty-three Grand Avenue. Casa Vallarta, seventy Davis Straits. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, three twenty-seven Gifford Street. Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, two seventy-three Main Street. Sopranos Casino by the Sea, two eighty-six Grand Avenue. Three eleven Gifford Street, DBA Coonamessett Inn, three eleven Gifford Street. Delaware North, DBA Seacrest Beach Hotel, three fifty Quaker Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Automatic Amusements, Ryan Family Amusements, twenty-three Town Hall Square. Falmouth Cinema Pub, one thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway. DJ's Falm- DJ's Family Sports Pub, eight seventy-two Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Theater License, Falmouth Cinema Pub, one thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Class two used cars, Falmouth Auto Sales, seven thirty-five T-Ticket Highway. Frank's Auto Sales, four 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 East Falmouth Highway. O'Hara Motors, fifty Spring Bars Road. Pier, thirty-seven sixty-four Scranton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vehicles for Hire, White Tie Limousine Company Incorporated, two ninety-two T-Ticket Highway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing to sign though, huh?
Yes, they do. We have them all to sign, but I can't sign and read at the same time.
I don't blame you, oh, okay, I didn't know what we were planning on.
So I'll pass those out as we, when we have some other reports we're going to hear. All right, we still have, I think, five more minutes. Do we have any selectmen reports that we're going to get? Or I guess we can do the minutes.
Yes.
Any corrections for any of the minutes that we have?
Yes, there's a, I conferred with Jennifer on the minutes, let's see if we can get to the right one, of Monday, October twenty-first. There is a piece that's actually been omitted and needs to be filled in. So it's on page four. This was our joint meeting.
So we should hold that one?
Jennifer said that she would complete that.
Get it back to us? Okay, so we'll hold the joint meetings, so the minutes from October twenty-one. How about the open session meeting minutes for November fourth, twenty nineteen? Any corrections for that?
Seemed okay to me.
I have his absence, so I don't, I don't see anything.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have the minutes for November twelve, twenty nineteen.
I found it to be substantially correct. Oh, excuse me, no, on page two.
Okay.
We have a sentence, it says, kind of up from the bottom where it says, Miss English Bragg, a motion to reconsider their vote because there is a lot of work to do to see if it is a.
Oh, okay, so it should say, this is about Article twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a lot of work to do to see if it's possible, is that what we're, I think that's what I was saying?
If it's accept, I don't know what.
Well, we were talking about, we were saying that there's a lot of work to do on that, on the issue with the senior center because there's zoning issues, so I think it just needs to say to see if it is a viable option.
To see if it's a viable option.
Right, that's what we're saying.
Okay, let's insert that. Okay with that, edit, I will move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And release to the public.
November thirteenth, that was the second night of town meeting.
Yep, I move approval and release to the public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And November fourteenth, we actually didn't.
We just opened and closed.
There was no business, right, okay.
The minutes are correct, so I move approval and release.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and we have, yes, Peter?
Yeah, the executive session minutes slipped onto the agenda again, they have not been corrected, so those are not ready for approval.
So these haven't been corrected, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so those are our minutes for today, and I think I can probably get started with our public hearing. That was a good use of our time. Okay, so we have a public hearing on tax classification hearing. I just need to see, welcome. Is there a notice that I read for this?
There is.
I'll find it.
Here it is.
Dig through mine, thank you. Town of Falmouth, Board of Assessors, Public Hearing Notice, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, Property Tax Allocation and Classification Hearing. In accordance with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-six of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen, we'll hold a fiscal twenty twenty property tax classification hearing Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty in the Selectmen's Meeting Room of Town Hall, fifty-nine Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Massachusetts. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider the percentages of the FY twenty twenty tax levy to be borne by each class of taxable real, and, excuse me, real and personal property. All persons interested in the determination may appear and be heard at the time and place stated above. And this was hosted on November fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Director of Assessing. Good to see you all one year later from last time we were here. The board has met and they've made recommendations to you. I sent you a package ahead of time that you had an opportunity to look at, but I will review their recommendations.
Great.
During your classification hearing, the Board of Selectmen are asked to make four choices relating to the manner in which their property is taxed within the town of Falmouth. The choices are as follows. A split tax rate. The Selectmen may choose to increase the share of taxes paid by commercial, industrial, real estate and personal property of second homeowners and businesses within the town of Falmouth. We can tax them up to a hundred, a hundred and fifty percent of their adjusted share. This increase would cause a rise in the commercial, industrial and personal property. So anybody that owns a business or commercial real estate anywhere within the town, land, building, et cetera, would have a raise of their rate, and the residential rate would decrease by thirty-seven cents. Your next opportunity to make a motion would be for a small business exemption within the town of Falmouth, and that would be for any properties, housing, businesses with ten or fewer employees. And we would give them an exemption on that. The exemption is a mute point if we don't have a split tax rate. There are estimated four hundred businesses that in Falmouth would get the exemption that have ten or fewer employees. And an exemption on that would cause the base rate to rise for everybody else. Your third option is an open space discount. In the town of Falmouth, the Board of Assessors rate open space as low as we can, so to give them any type of exemption would make their property tax exempt, so we wouldn't make a motion for that. And our next option would be a residential exemption. The Board of Selectmen may elect to offer an exemption up to twenty percent of the average residential property value to all domiciles of homeowners. We estimate that there could be between fourteen and eighteen thousand properties that would be impacted by that. The exemption is funded by an increase, commercial, industrial and personal property tax. So it would take that shift and shift it into that range, into the commercial residential. And I sent you the shift, it's considerable if we did that shift of a hundred and fifty. It's about, commercial property would rise about twenty-one hundred dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar property. So it's a considerable rise for the commercial, industrial and personal property, properties. With that, the Board of Selectmen have an opportunity to vote each one of those individually. The state would like to have that voted and make a motion on each one individually. And I gave you the vote and the motion on each one of them in the report. And do you have any questions? What's next?
I do.
Yes.
At the Cape Cod Selectmen Council Association meeting a couple of months ago, we had a presentation from the, I think, the, so the person on Nantucket that does, your comp-
Debbie.
Debbie, yes. And they've used a residential tax exemption. And I believe, as I understood, that they actually are using it to build affordable housing because they have even a worse problem than we do here in Falmouth. Why shouldn't we be considering the same kind of, it doesn't have to be the full amount that's allowed, but why aren't we considering that as a way of helping to subsidize the development of affordable housing, particularly in the areas where we want to potentially increase the density?
One of the reasons is the state is recommending twenty to twenty-five percent of the properties be commercial, industrial and personal property. And we're only at eight percent, we're not even close. So the burden that we're going to shift to the commercial, industrial and personal property taxpayers is going to be very large. So it's something that you're going to take, we already have commercial, personal property. So every business in the town of Falmouth is not only paying their real estate tax, they're also paying a secondary tax. So we're already taxing them twice. And for the most part, a lot of those are landlord-owned. So that landlord is going to pass that additional tax on to any of the businesses on Falmouth that don't own their real estate. They're going to send it somewhere, and that's going to be the most likely location. You're just, what you're doing, Mr. Patterson, is taking a base rate of taxes and just shifting that base rate over to the smaller population of the town of Falmouth and they're carrying it. And that's why I did the shift with the math for you, so that you could understand that. There's not enough of a savings for the small amount of the population that would benefit from that.
But on the other hand, we have an awful lot of second homes, second, third homes, whatever, that are being rented out. You know, and those fall into that business category.
Correct.
And they're taking those homes off of the market because it's so easy to rent over the summer, do it for two months, and those are not available as part of the housing stock, it's throughout the rest of the year. And that's putting the pressure on housing prices and rental rates. And it also makes it very difficult for anybody that might want to rent one of those homes because they get kicked out come, you know, the end of May. So, you know, I'm looking for a way to kind of balance the economy here because it's obviously making it very difficult for people to work here in Falmouth and afford to live here as well. And so Nantucket's doing it, and I'm kind of trying to understand why, you know, in detail, why we wouldn't consider doing a similar kind of thing.
Do you mind if I just step in for a second? Just from a bigger picture, Jennifer Mullen, Finance Director. Just, the vote here today, really what you're looking at is shifting the rate. You're not saving money or the town isn't going to be able to take any money and then put it aside and fund something else. It's really a shift. So if you shift, if you have a residential exemption, there's been a lot of discussion about residential exemption. You're exactly right, in Nantucket, and then they actually had a workshop down Cape. But you're shifting that tax, so somebody else is going to pay more. And it really is, it's a political decision. I've always looked at it that way, if you're going to shift the rate. If you decide to shift the rate and you want more information, we'll be happy to bring it back to you, but it really, it needs more study, I believe, and I think it would need a little bit more to the Board of Selectmen to see if that's really where you wanted to go. It wouldn't be done at a tax classification hearing where we want to send the bills out. I think you'd want to, if you want to make somebody else pay more and somebody else pay less, that is definitely in your purview. And if you want a presentation about that, we can definitely do that. But I just wanted to make clear from a, you know, that's really a policy, and Board of Selectmen sets policy. But you're shifting it, you're not saving money, you're not going to get money from somewhere to build something. That's not how it works. You're shifting the rate, the levy will always be the levy, we're always going to bill the taxpayers that amount. It depends, it just means how much you're going to pay and who's going to pay that. Is the commercial going to pay more or the residential exemption, that shifts it as well.
If I might, I, we've had the presentation to one degree or another in the past, and I continue to appreciate the fact that Falmouth has kept the mill rate at a very reasonable rate compared to similar communities, number one. Number two, if you talk with people anywhere on the Cape and even across the canal, Falmouth is an incredibly sought-after community because we've grown carefully. And we've looked at the impact upon our citizens and new folks that are coming. We've tried to be as attractive as we can in terms of our sustainability going forward. And we've supported businesses, particularly small businesses. and we've supported businesses, particularly small businesses, and there's such a small margin for these, these mid-sized businesses that are struggling to maintain year-round restaurants. If you remember, you know, twenty years ago, Main Street rolled up the sidewalks, and it's taken such a long time for us to, to really have a robust year-round business community, really from, from border to border entirely in Falmouth. And, and so I think that, I think we've done a good job in keeping the, the balance as we have right now, and I certainly would not want to change it.
I guess, sorry, Doug, I, I guess I would say that I'd like to see the impact, sort of, you know, in the next twelve months about what happens with the tax we're collecting on some of the rental properties that Sam is rightfully pointing to. You know, some of those short-term rentals that we should be getting some taxes coming in on, and, and have a sense of, you know, what that looks, what that looks like, because that is part of this larger question about how, how do those properties that are not out there for folks to live in year-round, how, and are rented out as commercial, you know, rentals, how does that impact now that we have kind of a different tax structure going forward?
And that's really my question. And I, I don't, I agree with you. I don't want to mess around with this now more than hap-
Okay.
But I'm ask, I'm challenging you to really, we have a structural, structural economic system right now that's starving affordability for people. And the question is, how can we subsidize housing through our tax levies? Is there a way that we can generate some subsidies that can be invested in housing? And I think that's the question, and that's, that's what I understood was the purpose of a Nantucket's approach.
So you're talk-
To do exactly that, and, and that's to try to rebalance things, because obviously wealthy people come here, they don't live here, I, I know, you know, they do have a property interest, but they are also imbalancing the supply-demand of housing, and it's up to us as government to take a look at, see, can we rebalance that a bit and not do it unfairly?
Let me, I just want to make sure that when we come back to you with information that we're actually giving you what you want, and so I'm just talking about the way I think about it. This is the tax levy, and we're talking about shifting the tax rate, so we tax people differently. Then you have the short-term rental tax, which is completely different than this. And so if you want to look at that sep, you know, that will be part of the budget discussion. We've, I'll tell you right now with the money that we've received, because the, the summer, the quarter in the summer, July, August, and September, if you look at it this year versus last year, it's only an extra fifty thousand dollars. I mean, people say only, but, you know, we haven't really seen the windfall, and there's been some, you know, articles in the newspaper regarding that. But, you know, that's going to come in a little bit more and a little bit more. And also, remember, the Board of Selectmen did vote to increase the hotel motel to one perc, increase it one percent to five percent. Now, that's effective January first. A lot of this I will be able to discuss with you when I, when we're putting the budget together. You know, I'll give you some revenue, what I'm looking at, revenue projections, why I might have projected something and why I didn't. Completely different than the tax levy.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that-
I think what Sam is saying just overall is that it's an interesting and important conversation for us to have about affordable housing, and we keep talking about it without sometimes talking about the most important part of it, which is, you know, the funding.
Exactly.
And I think all of these are part of that conversation. So as we go forward, and we've talked about this before, that in the coming year, we want to have a forum around the issue of affordable housing, sort of like sit down, trying to kind of really brainstorm. I think some of these things will be part of that conversation, so we can talk about that further, and they all are little pieces of, you're right, I mean, they're all, we're talking about very different things, but they all could potentially be part of the conversation about-
You know, and I want to-
We have developers there, too.
Yes. The other, just to mention to the Board of Selectmen, because I do a ten-year strategic planning retreat every year, it's a great topic for your strategic planning retreat, and, you know, is this something the Board of Selectmen, obviously is in support of affordable housing, but how much do we want to start funding it? CPC funds it, you know, if you're looking at a funding mechanism and having that discussion, that is a great place to start, because when we do put the budget together, we do look at the Board of Selectmen's strategic plan. And the budget is the reoccurring revenues, right, for the reoccurring expenditures, but then you have the one-time as well, so it can be fit more in the capital. And so you're right, it is an inclusive discussion, if you will, but, you know, when we sit here and we're in a hearing and talk about the tax rate, I want to make sure when I come to you all that I'm giving you exactly what you asked for, you know, in the future.
Yeah, and I just want to say that the Housing Production Plan set a target for so many more units per year. We're not even coming anywhere close to meeting that target. Other municipalities in Massachusetts have done it. Question is, is there something that we can do to, to change the, the economic structure that we have now, which is so biasing, you know, the property values toward, you know, all non-resident people buying properties and basically using them for income as well as a few months or a few weeks of vacation?
Yeah, we'll look at it. We can look at it.
Doug, go ahead.
So we also should keep in mind that over the last several years, we've been steadily raising fees to make this whole system more sustainable, and if we're going to change from the factor of one and start splitting the tax rate, we might want to consider those fees as well. And the other thing is the vacation rentals, that's just coming up now. The due date for filling out the tax form is December first. I think a lot of people are going to think about it, and they're going to go from zero percent tax to thirteen point six. So I think a lot of people are going to choose not to do the vacation rentals. It's going to, it's going to be some of them anyway.
So just to this particular hearing, anything, any other questions from this board before I ask if there's any input from folks here? Anything else from the board, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this issue? Hearing none. Just a motion to close the hearing. So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, further discussion about what this board wants to do.
I would make a motion that we maintain the-
I think there's exact language. Do you have it?
Okay, I, I move that the Board of Selectmen would vote the following motion if they decide to support the Board of Assess's recommendation of factor of one. Move that the town of Falmouth continues to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one, and to reject the residential, commercial, and open space exemption.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Yep. And we'll, you know, just getting back to that other issue, we'll talk so that, you know, you can bring exactly what we're looking for, and you're not going off in a million directions. We really appreciate that. Great. Thank you. Okay. We have a second public hearing. This is returning to the fee hearing that we continued from November eighteenth, 2019, when we reviewed the fees, the proposed fees.
And the point of continuing is really to-
Allow for any input-
Right.
And get any, allow people to attend the second meeting. Thank you very much, in order to weigh in or reach out to us. I don't believe we received any, I personally did not receive any correspondence.
Agreed.
I don't think we did in regards to any of the fees, which we read out on that date. I will ask, is there anyone here on the board who wants to make a comment about any of the fees?
I think we just held it for public comment.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone here tonight-
It seemed reasonable.
-who wishes to speak to the proposed fee schedule? Okay, hearing none.
I'm going to, we close the hearing.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion on this issue?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Who put this agenda together? It's so fast. It should all be this. This is unprecedented. Okay, we have the update on vulnerability assessment. Elise, come on up. Welcome.
I don't think I've ever heard anybody read through the licenses as fast as you do.
That was, that was excellent.
That's one of the reasons it's shorter.
She didn't take a breath.
She has a future as an auctioneer.
Exactly.
I'm Charles McCaffrey, and I just want to say before Elise begins, that the vulnerability assessment they're doing is providing significant data and analysis that will be the basis for several other efforts, some already ongoing. So this is an important, basic effort of assessing our risks.
Thank you. Elise, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you, Charlie, for that introduction. I would say, again, my name is Elise Laduke, I'm a coastal scientist with the Woods Hole Group. This is the third time that I'm before you on this particular project. I'm also going to try to cram everything we've done in the last year into fifteen minutes, so it's going to be a bit of a whirlwind. I recommend reading the draft final report when it's out in the next couple of weeks, but I will try to sort of breeze us through the highlights-
Thank you.
-for this evening.
Charles Rush, you've got plenty of time.
All right, well, I'll just tell you how it all began.
I left a screaming four-year-old at home, so speak for yourself.
I'm going to go into my mega, Megan English Braga voice. I'm just talking, da-da-da-da-da. So for tonight, quickly reviewing the overall project objectives, reviewing how we did this and what the basic results were, and then really, I don't have time to get into all of the recommended actions we had in the report, but I'll give you some examples of the kinds of things that you can expect in the full document. Just to give, you know, make sure we all understand what the point of this project was. It was to provide data on likely present and future flooding scenarios, given storm surge, sea level rise, coastal flooding. Identify the potential flooding impacts to municipally-owned assets. I know that was a bit of a concern, can we include ever-source Verizon Towers? The town does now have all that data. Bob Shea is the, now the owner of all of the GIS rasters, so you can overlay it on any asset in town, including residences or, or, you know, all the benches in town, anything you wanted to look at their flood risk, you could see. Identify the potential sea level rise impacts to natural resources, look at the potential adaptation strategies to reduce risk, and then to develop some maps and graphics for public outreach. And I do think we had a really successful public outreach event a couple of weeks ago at the library. It was very well-attended, and the library, I have to say, has done an excellent job continuing that conversation. They've left everything posted in their main lobby and have continued to get feedback and comments. Just a quick overview, so risk, the way we figured this out was not just, does something get wet, but what is the likelihood that it gets wet during a flood event, and how, what is the consequence? Does nothing happen when it gets wet? Well, then it's not really a risk. Or is it a super catastrophic event if that thing gets wet? Even if there's a really small chance, that might be something we want to address. So the process we went through is we determined which assets we're going to look at. We only looked at coastal assets in town because something in, you know, north of one fifty-one is not likely to be flooded by a coastal event. We looked at what is the consequence of flooding using different criteria, ranging from area of service loss to impact on public safety. We looked at what is the critical elevation, and for some things, that's the ground level, but for other assets, it was some other part of the asset itself, maybe a threshold to the door, some elevated piece of equipment like a generator. This was where our model data came in. We obtained that probability of exceedance, that probability of flooding. So we have all of our, what is the likelihood of flooding in particular areas, and how deep is the water going to be in any of those locations? And then we crunch all of that down with some math. We have the probabilities of flooding, we have how important something is, that consequence store, and we come up with this composite risk score. The reason we do that is we were comparing all kinds of assets in town, everything from roads to buildings to baseball fields, and you have to have a way of comparing your apples and oranges. So with those composite risk scores, we were able to generate these sort of overwhelming tables. If you've looked at the report, when you look at every asset and all the roads in town, these tables become a little bit large, but it's important to have all of that information there. Within the report, we did break, break out certain types of assets, so the top twenty buildings and structures. And a lot of the sewer lift stations, this is unsurprising because, because a lot of them are gravity-fed, they have to be in low-lying areas to start with. A lot of the marine facilities, again, kind of a no-brainer because they're on the water anyway. But there were some things, like Town Hall, Mullen Hall School, main building actually ranks up here in the top twenty. It's still very low on the overall ranking, but when you just look at your buildings and structures in town, certain things percolate to the top. We did just look at roads separately as well, and we did leave a separate table just for that, because I think it's important for different departments in town to be able to look at their own assets independently, as well as for the town to look at all the assets together. The other thing you'll notice on these tables is in some cases, towns, certain roads, this is not going to show up on that screen.
You can use the cursor.
You can use the, yeah.
Haha. So things like Surf Drive, for instance, pop up here more than once, and that's because we looked at segments of the road. For certain things, if we told you Route twenty-eight had a risk of flooding, you'd ask me where. So we tried to keep things in logical segments, so you'll see that in these tables as well. And then finally, we did have a set of tables where we, we put everything together, and these get a little bit convoluted to look at, but really what this shows me is that the road system in Falmouth is by far and away the most vulnerable thing the town has overall. It has more types of assets on these combined tables than any of the other kinds. Once we had all of that data, we really looked at making recommendations in three different ways. Site-specific recommendations, where we looked at a single asset, whether it's the Woods Hole Drawbridge or a particular road, like Chappaquaire Road. We looked at regional adaptations, where we take a bigger-picture area and sort of come up with a holistic system that might be able to stop the flooding or reduce the flood risk to many assets by doing a single project in one location, or sort of comprehensive actions. And then we looked at natural resource adaptation recommendations, based on some of the SLAM modeling we've done in the past, how ecosystems are likely to change with sea level rise. There's less of a, an impact from storm flooding, let's say, to a salt marsh, but as sea level rise happens over time, habitats are likely to shift, change, migrate into different places. These are the thirteen individual assets that we focused our recommendations on in the report. These are not necessarily the top thirteen. They were strategically chosen to be of certain, of a range of asset types. So we have buildings and structures, we have a parking lot, we have marine and dock facilities, we have recreation facilities and roads and bridges. And the idea here is that we were kind of covering the whole range of assets that the town has and giving you examples that could then be adapted and applied to other areas of town as well. So this isn't everything the town needs to do wrapped up in this report, but it gives you a really good starting place. The three here in bold, the Old Dock Road Pier Assets, Town Hall, and the Minot Road Bridge down at Bristol Beach are the three I'm going to cover really quickly tonight. So the Old Dock Road Pier Assets, so this is sort of a conglomeration of individual pieces that we looked at. There's the shed, there's the upwellers, the wooden dock, and then sort of that whole paved wharf area itself. All of the recommendations in the report are broken out by time, and this gets to where sea level is at any one of those particular time steps, as well as what the progressed risk is at any one of those time steps, given the change in the probability of flooding. So in this particular case, there's some pretty short-term and, and the grand scheme of things, fairly simple things that can be done to help shore up an area like this. Something as simple as wet-proofing a shed. So the difference between wet-proofing and dry, wet flood-proofing and dry flood-proofing, dried flood-proofing keeps water from getting in. Wet flood-proofing lets water come in, but makes sure that nothing gets damaged when that happens. Either you've put everything in waterproof containers on the inside, you've used building materials that aren't going to mold or rot when they get wet. Something like a shed, you know, depending on what's in there, maybe it's just life preservers and, you know, things that are okay, yeah. So if there's any kind of electrical equipment, you'd want to shore that up rather than trying to keep water out of the whole shed. The upwellers themselves, what we found from talking to town staff is that they're not very well-secured right now, so if the water were to rise to a certain level during a storm, they could actually get lifted and float away. So just to secure the asset, just better bolt those down to the dock, and then at some point do an assessment to see whether the, the pier and wharf are structurally sound to withstand forces during a storm. The bigger picture in an area like this, use the cursor again, these maps don't change much when you're looking at the overall flood risk during a storm in present-day twenty-thirty or twenty-seventy to this area. It's really high now, and it's going to be really high in the future. It's right on the water, this isn't surprising. What's more informative is to look at the future extent of mean-high water. So the dark blue is where mean-high water is likely to be in twenty-thirty, the medium blue is where it's likely to be in twenty-fifty, and the light blue is where it's likely to be in twenty-seventy. So what this shows us is that by twenty-fifty, that whole wharf, as well as part of Old Dock Road, are going to be inundated on a twice-daily basis with every high tide. So that doesn't mean you can't still have a marine feature here, it just means it has to adapt. So it either needs to be elevated, so that at high tide, the part that people are using are above the water. If you choose to do that, the road itself would also have to come up, as well as the water mains, so everything comes up together. The other potential is that if you could shift all of these facilities a little bit over, at some point, they're going to reach a usable lifetime. We're talking the twenty-fifty, twenty-seventy timeframe. If there's ever a major repair that needs to be made, potentially shifting it over to where you get to a point in the roadway where there's a point where the road's going to stay dry on a regular basis, the road could actually become a dead end. There's only a small stretch of road here that gets affected, and houses could actually be reached from the other end as well. Dead ends are not great for access, emergency response, and other things, but when you look at the whole town, you're going to have to start picking which roads get elevated and which roads get sort of chopped up a little bit. And this is one where you wouldn't actually lose access to any particular thing, because there's ways to get there from both directions, but you could still have a boat ramp, you could still have a wharf, it would just be accessed from a slightly different location. So that's what we had for recommendations for this particular location. For the Town Hall, the real risk to this building is from the backside. Um, there's a staircase, um, that, it's a pretty low little grassy park area from Sitters Pond up to the building itself, and that's where the flooding would come from. Um, and it's that elevation of the threshold to the stairwell, it kind of goes down a couple steps before you go in that back door. If you could just dry flood-proof the lower floor of Town Hall, that's again, keeping water out. Um, so using materials and using some kind of block at the door, um, that would protect you from storms today. Um, looking forward into the future, um, you could actually create sort of an earthen berm landscape feature that connects to a high part of the landscape on this side of the parking lot, wraps around the back parking lot, and actually meets up to the, is it St. Barnabas Church? Um, and you could basically protect not only Town Hall and the parking lot, but some of the businesses in this area as well.
It's a dike.
It's a dike, but you could be created in such a way that it becomes sort of interesting parkland, um, so it doesn't have to be, um, a structure, non-sightly thing. Um, tricky because it does get onto some private property, but if other businesses knew that there was a benefit, they might want to get on board. Um, doing so might make this building more, um, usable in the long term. Um, if you chose to do this berm like that, what we were thinking is that this building could last usably with a, un- with a reasonable flood risk, uh, up to twenty seventy and maybe beyond. Recommend the town, look at what is the lifetime of this building. If at any point it becomes, you would need a major tear-down rebuild of this, maybe consider moving to another location rather than putting it in a risky location. Um, and if you do, did that, obviously, you could either purchase land and build a new building, or utilize town buil- land and build a new building, or acquire and repurpose an existing building. Um, so kind of two ways to think about it. And then the final individual asset I'm gonna talk about tonight is the bridge at Minot Road, um, at Little Pond. Um, this bridge slash big culvert, um, actually is undersized currently, and at high tide, this is a photo, the water's already hitting the top of that rather than going under the road. So there's already so- some significant forces on that structure, um, even on a regular day without storms. Um, with storms today, this, this is Little Pond and this is Great Pond. A lot of this area of Minot Road is very vulnerable to flooding today, and I think everybody knows that, we've seen that. It's not going to get any better in the future. Um, again, what I found more striking was where's the high water line gonna be during high tide on a sunny day without a storm in the future? And again, the colors, the dark blue's twenty thirty, the medium blue's twenty fifty, and the light blue's twenty seventy. Um, and what this shows me is that by twenty fifty, you're gonna start getting pooling and ponding in the road on high tide. And by twenty seventy, you're gonna have a pretty significant stretch, almost half a mile of road, that's gonna start to get impacted, um, from Grand Ave to the Great Pond Bridge. So, again, in the short term, just making sure that that bridge is structurally sound enough to withstand what's happening to it on a daily basis and make repairs as necessary. Um, in the kind of short future term, to protect against this piece here, um, doing some kind of living shoreline or an elevated berm on that side of the road is sort of a temporary stopgap measure to keep it passable on a non-storm day. But in the long term, this is a section of roadway that will either need to be completely elevated for that entire length, or some kind of a thought about phased abandonment of that stretch because you can't have a road that's tidal. Um, so, it was a little bit, um. You know, it's a little shocking when you start thinking of these things, and we did find a number of these cases around town. Um, one of them being Surf Drive, which prompted the additional study that we're doing, um, to look at what can be done in that area, and hopefully, things that come out of that study um, can be insightful and help with other areas of town as well. So in addition to these asset-specific things, we did look at three regional adaptation areas. Um, we had the Main Street, um, top of Falmouth Inner Harbor area, um, the Woods Hole Water Street area, and the top of Little Pond into Falmouth Mall. Um, for the sake of time, I'm going to go through, um, just the top of Falmouth Harbor example, but just understand that in the report, there are these kind of phased, um, diagrams that show what the risk would be without any adaptations, you know, in the present and into the future, and then how that risk can be reduced, um, through some phased implementation. So when we were thinking about these, what we started with is, okay, where's the flooding coming from? Identify that flood pathway. And this is sort of a, a zoom-in of Main Street. Um, the harbor is down here. Um, every white dot is one of the town assets that we looked at in the study. There's a lot of recreational ones here, but the police station, the rec center, the new senior center, um, Morris Pond School, there's a sewer pump station down by the harbor. Um, so this, and you can see by twenty thirty and twenty seventy, the probability of flooding in this area gets higher and higher. Um, and it will start to affect a pretty significant number of town assets. This is one of the easiest kinds of flooding scenario to fix because it's a big area of flooding that starts from a very narrow point. Um, so it's one of those places where if you can do a small project, you can potentially reduce the flooding to many assets, not just town-owned, but also the businesses, the roads, and everything that's back there as well. We also wanted to consider existing plans. Woods Hole Group did not make this drawing. This came out of the Cape Cod Commission study, um, for the Dyers Davis Straits, um, kind of business redevelopment. It's a beautiful idea. Um, we didn't wanna discount it completely. Um, opening a, um, daylighted stream between Morse Pond and Falmouth Harbor um, would have ecological benefits, um, perhaps, but would actually increase the flooding, um, to this area because now you're letting the water in. Um, but it doesn't mean you couldn't still do something like this. So what we did was we incorporated this idea into our plan as an option. Um, you could certainly reduce flooding without creating a greenway and an opened stream. Um, but basically, within these panels, um, the left-hand panel is where the flood risk would be in present day, twenty thirty and twenty seventy if you did nothing. Um, with the dark blue being your one percent event or your hundred-year water level, the light blue being a much bigger event. And then on the right here, we have how that risk is changed if you implement what we're suggesting. Um, there's no major action to be taken right this very minute. Um, more to just start planning, if this was something the town wanted to do, start talking about any property acquisitions that had to hap- happen, or, um, obtaining the funding to do this. But really, the, the key here is to build, um, a little bit of an elevated berm in what is already a, a town-owned park space. Um, and this would also allow, um, the sewer pump station that's there, if that got elevated as well, it could stay in place. Um, and you could do this without, with very little overlap onto any of the other properties and still reach the high ground on both sides, um, stopping any of, um, this flooding by twenty thirty, um, by bringing that up a little bit. This shows you how you could incorporate essentially that green space that was in the other figure. You could still have these walkways and pathways, um, the daylighted stream if you'd like. If you were going to go with the daylighted stream, you'd want to have, um, a tide control on the downstream end of it. So water could come out, um, through Morse Pond, but you wouldn't want tide to come up, or it could be, um. Something you close during a storm, exactly. So you could let it be tidal if you wanted, um, but also be able to control it. Um, there is also the potential to make this, if you were to think bigger, and some bigger changes. This is already acquire a pretty significant amount of property acquisition on the part of the town. If you could acquire just the strip right here, you could eliminate, was this Robbins Road? Make the park actually something that's big enough for people to recreate on. Right now, it's a very narrow little strip. You could put out more picnic tables. It could be a nice waterfront park. You could create a new roadway through it back here that's a little farther back from the water. But by twenty seventy, in order to account for the increased water levels, you'd need to make that berm just a little bit bigger and wider than it was in twenty thirty. But that's the general concept and the general kind of ideas that we went through, um, with the other areas as well. Um, and then one final point here is we did also have recommendations for natural resource adaptations. The three areas chosen by the steering committee were Washburn Island, Great Sippewist Marsh, and the Chappaquaig Road Barrier. Um, and what we did was we used, um, the habitat, um, output, um, projections from the SLAM model to see how wetlands were likely to migrate, change, um, decrease, or increase in area as sea level changed. Um, and the one that I'll sh- share with you tonight is the Great Sippewist Marsh example where really, what we found looking at the whole town with these results is there's a really significant reduction in salt marsh area in general in the whole town over time. And that's true for most of the state, and the reason is that marshes have vertically accreted for forever. And sea level rise has been rising slowly for e- forever, and they've been able to keep pace with each other. Going forward, if sea level rise accelerates as people are predicting it to, marshes aren't gonna be able to accrete vertically fast enough. And then also, in very few cases, do they have opportunities to migrate landward. Either our topographies just get steep too quickly, or there's some hard barrier, whether it's a seawall or a road or a parking lot in their way. So, marshes have sort of a, a dire future in ma- much of our coastline. So where there is the opportunity to encourage, um, marsh restoration or marsh enhancement, um, or marsh migration is a area that we'd like to focus on. And so in this case, you can see from present day, the Great Sippewist Marsh is mostly salt marsh, this is green. And as you move to twenty thirty, twenty fifty, and twenty seventy, you get more of the tan, which is a tide flat or a mud flat, and the blue, which is an open water. It's basically because it's drowning. One of the things that can work for an area like this is elevation enhancement or thin-layer deposition. It's not the most, um, digestible permitting idea in the state right now, but I think as time goes on and this becomes more and more of a problem, um, the theory on that may change, and the need for it may trump the, the potential damage. I mean, if it's a drowning marsh anyway, how much harm can you do by trying? Um, so if that ever becomes available, um, this may be a marsh that would be a good candidate for that. The other thing in this area is if you look on the east side of the bike path, there are freshwater wetlands now. They could be salt marsh in the future. They're at that right elevation with sea level rise where they could support salt marsh if you could let the water in appropriately. Right now, most of the bike path, even where it goes through the, the marsh area, is on a filled causedway with just a small culvert. But if you could envision something like this in the future, so this is the boardwalk out by Coast Guard Beach in Eastham, um, you could allow water to flow through the whole thing, have so- have marsh on both sides. Um, so, again, you wouldn't necessarily wanna tear down the bike path today and put this in, but if and when the bike path ever needs major repairs, or there will be, there's a point in the report where this is talked about because the bike path was one of our assets as well, there'll be a point where the bike path itself starts to get inundated, and it's gonna need to be elevated. Rather than elevating the causedway, it could be transitioned to more of an open boardwalk, or at least have a much lo- larger culvert than it currently has. Um, so that was very brief and touched on only a very small fraction of some of the things that will be in the final report. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that you may have.
That's just, I mean, again, I know we say this every time, but I, I, you know, it's just so instructive to be able to really wrap your head around. It's very easy to, especially when we have a storm like we had just a few weeks ago, to, for that panic to set in. I mean, some of those pictures of, um, the beach house on Surf Drive, albeit those are, you know, much more extreme, but if anyone was out there the day of that storm, or shortly thereafter, I mean, water was in that building, and it was the, you know, the beach was in the parking lot and across the street, and, um.
And the bike path buckled like it was.
So these, you know, to, we're seeing all of these.
Yes.
We're seeing a lot of the sort of precursors, right, in real time.
Absolutely.
But to have that, um, you know, which can be overwhelming, but to have this data and to have it sort of fleshed out in this way, I think is very instructive and helpful to, you know. Each one of these items is a, is an enormous undertaking.
Mm-huh.
And so to be able, as a community, to really look at these and start to make some hard choices as we go forward, and like you said, think about, you know, are we, are we making decisions about sort of dead-ending certain roads because we're gonna, you know, we're gonna really pile money into another project? And that, I think that's very helpful, rather than just be overwhelmed by the fact of, you know, there's a danger to these really important assets that, you know, everybody needs and enjoys. So I think it's just really helpful, and the feedback that I've gotten, and I'm sure the other board members have, from po- from folks who have seen this presentation or paid attention to it through these meetings, um, is the same. So we're just very appreciative of the fact that you've taken the look in this way, and that you've then incorporated the Surf Drive component because that has been something that people have been really concerned about as well. So, let me, I'll just go right down the line, so.
Sure. So, I mean, when, um, when, when Mr. Brown suggested, um, I think he, he was the most forward-looking member in terms of the Coastal Action Committee. So we've had a lot of important study and, and really updating studies that have been done in the past. So the real challenge to the Board of Selectmen in the town is, what do we do with this? Where do we go from here? And it, it just strikes me, you know, you're, you're really putting on the, on our, you know, on our view some kind of avant-garde potential, um, responses. And, you know, like the, the filling of the marshes that, you know, as one option, which is kind of completely opposite of the way that, that we normally look at things. And I, I think for the board and, and for the community, the next thing to talk about is, so do, do we have some kind of enterprise fund, or some sort of, you know, do we start, you know, socking money away little by little for one project at a time? And, and looking for matching funds and lobbying the state for, you know, opportu- grant opportunities. I, I know that the Kunemesset River Project is, is really an incredible example that, uh, Dr. Betsy Gladfelter had put together, you know, many, many, um, uh, experts and, and groups. And, and is that the prism that we look at this problem from, and, and does Falmouth become, you know, one of the forward-thinking communities where we, you know, we put some measure of our assets and our, and our funding in place to prepare for the, the next storm? I mean, if this is, you, you've looked, you know, quite a few years ahead. But the Coastal Action Committee was created to start some action. So I, I'm, you know, I think that this is really a springboard. Does, does that committee then become a, a, you know, a, an advocacy group for the state? Does that committee then become, you know, more grant, um, seeking in terms of matching town funds? This is, I mean, this is a really great start to, you know, the next step being action, not just by the committee, but on the part of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens. So I, you know, I think it's, there, it's very thought-provoking.
Sam?
Now, have you thought about approaching it from a cost-benefit standpoint? Because it seems to me, I mean, we're talking about a lot of property, private property being consumed by this. You know, the, the Dutch, you know, they weren't necessarily protecting land, they were trying to create more land that they could use for agriculture and, and living space. Now, they've been using dikes for a long time to keep the, the ocean out, in fact, move the ocean even further out. I mean, we have a lot of history of doing the kinds of things that you're suggesting might give us some protection. Uh, but, they're expensive.
Mm-huh.
And so I guess the question I'm saying is what convinces people, well, now's the time to begin to start making those sacrifices in anticipation of a much greater cost in the future.
So, a true cost-benefit analysis was outside of the scope of this particular project. Um, the one thing that's, um, holding up the finalization of this report are the cost estimates. Um, it's, it's a big, we have a lot of recommendations, and so I handed it to our engineers, and they were a little overwhelmed by the amount of things I wanted them to estimate costs for. Um, but you, you will ultimately have that. For every recommendation we have in here, there'll be some, um, magnitude-level costs, you know, not ex- down to the nickels and dimes, but you know, is this a hundred thousand dollar project, a million dollar project? And then, I, you can look at some of the things that your departments do on a regular basis. You look at the repairs that have to get made to Surf Drive, to the bike path, to places that after every storm, you're, you're picking up and shoring it back up, and, and multiply that out by an annual, however many years. Um, and you can, you know, it's not a true cost benefit, but you can, you can kind of do some quick back-of-the-envelope calculations for yourself. But yeah, there's go- there's gonna be some really hard questions, and some of these projects are gonna be expensive, and it's gonna be a hard sell to some people who are like, well, we don't need to put in this thing that's gonna protect us in twenty seventy today. You know, we'd rather use the money to, you know, make better schools, have a West Falmouth fire station. Um, so it's, it's hard, I.
But that information will be there.
Yes.
I mean, that's part of the value of this, is that, yes, at the end of the day, every taxpayer gets to make a decision. They may say, I don't wanna put a bridge at Minot because I don't, you know, we'll just push the sand back. And someday, we won't be able to do that, but they will have had that information. And, I mean, that will be, the, it's not gonna be for lack of, um, knowledge and understanding of the potential problem. It will be for a, a sort of value judgment, um, and I think that's the difference. From where we were before, we just sort of had anticipation, sort of a general, you know, just common sense that these, these assets are vulnerable, but no idea to what degree, to the timeline, um, and in what way. So this gives, will ultimately give this board and the public real information to make those decisions on.
And I think my, my personal goal, my personal hope is that the town will take this and not just use the recommendations that we have in the report, but you have a really capable, um, GIS staff and, you know, planning staff here in town. They can take this data, and when you have any future planning project in town, when you're trying to build a new building or upgrade something, look at this data before you actually start designing anything, and ask yourself, is this the right place to put this new asset that's gonna have a fifty or a hundred-year lifetime? Do we really wanna put it here, or should we put it here where it's less vulnerable?
We're always talking about fixing the bike path. Maybe we plank it instead of put more hardtop or whatever.
Well, yeah, so that's what I was sort of suggesting here, is that you can create sort of almost like the, if you picture like the boardwalk and sandwich. Um, if you, if you create it right, you can ride your bike over this, create it wide enough so two bikes could pass, um, and you're allowing water to go underneath. So it's, there's many options, um, and there's sections of the bike path that will be fine, and there's sections that are pretty low. Um, and a number of them did, um, pop up pretty high on the, um, the total risk numbers.
So, I'm glad I got to see the presentation at the library.
It was a much more extensive.
I don't know if you compressed this just for, uh, time?
It did, yes.
Well, I told a lot of people to tune in tonight because there was some really, uh, interesting stuff, that a lot of it you didn't get to touch on in tonight's timeframe.
I was asked to keep it to fifteen minutes. I don't think I succeeded, but.
No, you were great, only because we're gonna, I mean, there'll be a final
Yeah.
presentation, and so the goal is to, for, you know.
This was the final present, that public one at the library.
Final, when the final project is done, when we have everything in front of us, this board is going to have further conversations, is what I'm saying. So, it's not the end of the conversations about this.
The presentation's currently posted on the library website, um, and I've actually had people email me, um, you know, wanting more information or having questions, so people are finding it.
On our website as well? It's on the library, we could get on the town too, right?
Yeah, I found some of the, uh, important points at the library important enough that we should mention now. The fact that the Eel Pond, uh, was it, uh, Woods Hole Drawbridge is really not viable in the long term.
So this is a really tiny picture. So this is a really tiny picture of it, but the, the thing to think about here is the road that cuts on the backside of Eel Pond will.
Eel Road, Millfield, I mean.
Millfield Road is at an elevation that by 2070 will be tidal. So you start to lose transportation that way. There's also quite a bit of tidal inflow that will start happening at where Taft, Taft Field is, Taft Park. So that's a pretty good area to allow salt marsh to come in. We have a pretty innovative chief engineer who was actually thinking that a total re-envisioning of Woods Hole would actually involve closing this off as a drawbridge and creating a new harbor entrance from the other side. This is gigantic. This would be re-envisioning the whole thing, but it could be making something completely new and awesome out of what could be otherwise very disheartening. So this requires long-range planning. If this is something the town is interested in and is outlined in more detail in the report, you'd want to start thinking about it sooner than later. But the idea is that Woods Hole is quintessential to Falmouth. You don't want to abandon Woods Hole, but you're gonna need to create a new mindset of living with water in that area. It's low-lying and it's vulnerable and there's really nothing we can do to change that. Kirk's vision was to create sort of a, a higher spine through this area to keep access open to Penzance Point, to maintain that commercial thoroughfare down Water Street and some of the academic and government buildings that are down that end. That could be elevated, shored up, floodproofed and retained and sort of that's the line you hold. But the rest of Woods Hole is gonna have to start of, you know, re-envisioning itself.
And the tide already comes in at the Captain Kidd and the Fishmonger to the basements just regularly. I mean, that's pretty normal and that has been for a really long time. So that's without any, that's without any of the storms, so.
Yeah.
It's already a very significant challenge.
So, I mean, these are all just ideas and recommendations for things the town could do. This isn't prescribed, it's not like you have to rush out tomorrow and dig a new harbor. As, and with all places, I mean, there are whole, with the other thing, sorry, there's a, there's a, this little dash line represents an elevated berm on the back of that new marsh area that would actually protect neighborhoods that would otherwise flood on a regular basis and be able to retain residences and homes. There are other residences in here, especially along the Millfield Road area, that they may not be viable long-term. And there's other areas of town where you're gonna find that and that's a really hard conversation to have. And it's something that I think the town's gonna have to look at in, in a number of different neighborhoods. What do you do long-term with neighborhoods that are going to be flooded on a, on a daily basis? This isn't just dealing with storm flooding, this is dealing with tidal flooding. And that's a, that's a bigger policy question, but at least in this report, we've helped you identify some of where those areas are so you can start that conversation. And we, we do have, through the Surf Drive follow-up study that we're doing, we've had some really interesting conversations with not only department heads, but with all of the land trusts in town because they are such big landholders in that Surf Drive area. And at least in that area, they've, they've said, you know, how can we help? You know, is there a land acquisition step here that, you know, the land trust could take on? So it's not necessarily the, the town that's buying this land to either protect or undevelop. You know, so if, if homeowners know that there's an option to sell and be able to get out with something that they can start somewhere else, that, that's one way to look at it too. So it's not all a burden on the town, it can be a team effort from, from the other organizations in town as well.
Right.
Is there, I just want to say, Doug, was there anything else from the presentation that you wanted?
No, just, I, I just think the more information, the better. And was the FCTV at the library, did they record it? I didn't think they were. I don't think that was recorded. That's unfortunate, but, you know, what we really have to do is get this out in front of the public and make sure everybody understands the potential changes that are coming and all these are gonna be big projects that are gonna be voted townwide. They're not gonna just be things that we decide.
But I think that's part of where Coastal Resoncy Action Committee will come in, is that they're, you know, they're gonna take some of this information and that'll be part of the presentations that we do have and the conversations that we do have with them going forward. So this is sort of, I see this as kind of their baseline. You know, they're gonna operate from this, this wealth of knowledge as they continue to have that conversation, which will be something that's, again, in front of the public on a, on a reoccurring basis.
And they commissioned all this information, so, you know, we have a great resource in the committee that's in the room.
Sam?
I guess I have a question in my own mind about how we actually begin to evolve people's thinking so they actually start to take action, including just simply selling and leaving. I mean, where's the tipping point in people's minds? How do we create the kind of communication that we need to give a realistic picture? I mean, have this been done anywhere where communities basically face an impending, you know, takeover of something and have to make, go through that process of deciding, you know, who, who, who gets sacrificed and who gets protected?
That's a big question. So there are a number of communities that are starting to implement town bylaws or regulations that prohibit redevelopment in certain cases. You can only rebuild so many times after a storm, so that kind of gets people to move away. There is a small section at the very end of the report that you'll get from this project that has policy and regulation recommendations. And some of the things that I put in there that I think are kind of useful is if you give incentives to folks to move and not only move, but move and stay in town. You don't want them to leave, you, you want to keep your community intact, you want to keep your tax base intact. Things like giving them, you know, some kind of a tax incentive or some kind of financial incentive to buy another house in town if they're going to sell that one. And, and or, I think it was actually, might have been Charlie that mentioned it, having lot size rights transferred to different areas of town. There might be a part of town now that has a minimum lot size of, say, an acre and maybe the lots that people are vacating are quarter acre lots. Maybe you allow them to redevelop this area at quarter acre lots so you can move more people. So there's some ways to think about it, but this is very new and a lot of coastal communities are struggling with the same thing you're struggling with. And the biggest issue that a lot of communities are worried about and rightly so is our takings liabilities. You can't just make some kind of law that makes it so someone can't stay in their private property.
We know that.
So it's, it's hard. So how do you, I think for me, there's, there's carrot and the stick, right? So I like carrots. So, so give people good reasons to do the right thing, I think is always the best. And then there's always, well, what happens after the next big storm? It might just not be financially viable for some people to rebuild where they are, even if there's no regulation stopping them.
Right. That moves the conversation, but the hope is that you, you know.
It's better to be proactive than reactive.
Better to be prepared and to have talked about some of these things. I think, you know, another thing that will be a policy component or a really a communication component from this board is, you know, I think reaching out at those, like Doug was talking about, trying to get the information out there, but, you know, getting something where it's in, you know, we have all of this data and looking at sort of neighborhood or village chunks of it so that you can do presentations at the village associations so that they can kind of drill down and look at, you know, specifically that area, even though it's a larger conversation. But, you know, for folks who maybe are not gonna come and sit through a really long presentation or just, it's not on their, their radar to look at the entire picture, people are generally very interested in what affects them, you know, right away. And so to take some of those, that, take some of this data, some of the recommendations that come out of Coastal Resoncy Action Committee and start to reach out, you know, to those village associations, to those groups that are out there that we can connect with to spread that information and start that conversation. I think that'll be something that, you know, will really be incumbent upon this board to do once we're kind of at the end, you know, process of this. Because that's, that's, that's really fostering the, people starting to think about it and, you know, then gathering as a community to have those tough conversations, so.
And I, I.
It's helpful that we have, it's helpful the way you've broken down a lot of the information so that we can look at it in many different ways.
And I do think that the public meeting that we have scheduled as part of that Surf Drive project, that's scheduled for December 5th in the REC Center at 6 o'clock, will basically do exactly what you're saying for the Surf Drive area. So at that point, that meeting, we're not talking about recommendations. We're laying the groundwork for the risks in this particular area. What are the storm flood risks? What are the sea level rise risks? Where are the flood pathways? And really talking about what are the assets and values and uses that people have there now and what do people want to see? What, it's a, it's a data gathering mission on our part to talk to the community and hear what they have to say. So it, it's gonna be a really sort of local level conversation that I think will, will start this process for the town of Falmouth.
And I think it would be helpful if we just in advance of that, reach out, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce should know that this is happening. There are a lot of businesses along that strip, you know, business owners that should be part of that conversation and hearing that. So, you know, I think we need to make sure in the couple of weeks, that week and a half that we have, that we make sure folks who really are stakeholders are aware, so, you know, individuals who don't get the enterprise and see that this is notice are really aware that that's happening.
I have another approach that just came to mind and that's really asking the, the community, what assets do we want to protect? Because I think if you start from that side and then of course have an assigned cost associated with that, you know, maybe that begins to make people start thinking, it's here, oh wow, if we want to protect that, it's gonna cost us this amount. And that's independent of saying, oh, I'm gonna lose my property. But it's looking at it from a community standpoint of what's the cost of protecting what we really value. I mean, you could pick anything, Menard Beach and say, all right, this is what it's gonna take. And you've, you've given us some ideas of things like berms or dykes and, but the question should be, all right, where do we start? You know, what does the community value as something they want to protect, independent of private property?
And another thing that folks can do at home is go on their computers on the Kip Cut Commission's website and look at the coastal planning modeling tool, which will, you can click on your neighborhood or your area and it'll show you what the projections are for sea level rise, so. People should update themselves on what the possibilities are.
So those are separate, separate analyses, but it's, that's a really, they both give the same basic, if your property's in a really low-lying area, you'll see risk from both sources.
But, but I, I think there's a tendency for people to take the ostrich approach. If it's a probability, you know, oh gee, I'm, I'm not gonna worry about it, you know? And, and I'm not sure that's the right way to do this because if, if we had assets that we wanted to somehow or other invest in protecting, now they're gonna have to pay the taxes, the cost upfront. And I think that's more of a wake-up call in some ways for an awful lot of people. I hear a lot of people, I know where people that live in Woods Hole say, oh, well, we know it's gonna flood. And that's the end of it. Ah, yeah, okay, well.
Well, they're perfect candidates for living in the community that we've targeted for living with water.
Yeah, I find that to be an uncomfortable, if I were in that position, I would not be happy with that situation.
I know. Well, everybody has different risk thresholds, so.
Yep. Or denial thresholds, as the case may be.
Charlie, did you wanna, you have to come to the microphone.
I think you covered the issues and we're well aware of our responsibility to come up with a healthy set of recommendations that touched not only on.
Charlie, you should be talking to the mics because of our audience at home, sorry. But let me say while you're going up that this is really excellent and I think it's the first time that, you know, we have information that makes it pretty graphically clear in a time scale what the probabilities are of an inundation and loss of property value and assets.
Yes, this is very good. A lot of your questions had to do with communities and paying for things, which this is the basis, the physical problem that we have. We very much need to address financial options and you mentioned several of them among you tonight. Another one could be creating taxing districts. So there may be a lot of expense in some areas, as long as it's a sound approach, that's not a townwide expense. So just as with sewers, we have sewer taxing districts and a part is paid by, for, by the homeowners and a part is paid for the, by the town. If we could get the state to authorize, if it's not already implicitly authorized, creating a coastal resilience district so that if a physical project is needed, but it protects only a few homes and a little bit of town assets, then the, the cost could be apportioned among the town and the homeowners.
The cost of the protection is a betterment cost.
Yeah. I know that in, when I've mentioned this before, Southampton on Long Island, a str- stretch of several thousand feet of eroding beach and very expensive homes. This is a unique situation. You know, these are homes that are more expensive than Penzance. But they wanted to nourish their beach and the town said, not in the town's interest. And we won't let you use hard structures. They had a prohibition in beach areas of hard structures. So they were gonna spend 25 million on nourishing the beach. What the town did was, we're not paying for this, but we'll let you create a special taxing district and the town will float the bonds so you'll get government bond benefits. And you also get the advantage of the district that you only need to get a majority of the homeowners to sign up. And even the recalcitrant ones, now because it's a public taxing district, will have to contribute. And the project went forward and it, these were homes that could have, I think it cost 20, as I mentioned, 25 million for the nourishment. But that was, but this is all scalable.
Right.
It's the concept, not the scale that's important.
Right.
Thank you. I mean, I just, you know, I don't want Doug or other folks who are watching to think that, I mean, this is really the, you know, the start of this conversation. This is the, the wrapping up of the research component of it, which is the foundation and the, and the jumping off point of our conversation. So this is really not the endpoint of it. You know, we're just getting the presentation on everything that they put together, but this is us starting this conversation as a community in the many ways that we're gonna go about doing it. And I envision that we're gonna have many public conversations and some of those listening sessions that we've had on other issues, you know, we can have either large scale about, you know, sort of the, the, the issue as a whole or small scale about particular recommendations and, and hear from the public and go forward. So, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, it's nice to have the kind of the full presentation, but it's really just the start of, of those in-depth conversations.
And although it's the, the end phase of this study, it's really just the beginning of the engineering and the planning that we have to do.
Correct, yeah.
I would mention that to facilitate that, we have looked at the shoreline, both its natural features, the coastal littoral zones and the communities and divided it into 14 areas that are neighborhoods, but are also logical geographic areas for analysis of the flooding and wetland resources, et cetera.
Right.
Excellent. I think the vice chair's gonna finish the meeting?
Okay.
So thank you very much. Great, great job. Really great job.
You know, it seems to me we also have an age-related attitude toward it. I mean, I, I can tell you, I'll be lucky to be around 20 years from now. And there's a lot of my, you know, my peers, if you will, that are at that stage of life where they might not be willing to think about committing significant resources in, in investing in this kind of protection.
Right.
So we got a kind of an age bias in terms of responding to this situation where, I think, I'm not gonna be around here anyway.
Yeah.
So I think that's another social dynamic that we, it's a reality we have to deal with.
Well, in some ways that might be a helpful thing because some people, when they're at the end of life, it's okay to walk away and maybe that's how some properties will become vacant.
And some, a lot of very generous people will make it their legacy to pitch in.
Right.
Like we saw with Vicki Lowell and lots of other folks.
That's what I was thinking.
Have sort of seen long range and, you know, there's certainly the opportunity for that in a lot of these different properties.
And it's very heartening to see that the 300 committees are also very interested to take up the issue, so that's good.
Can I have a quick question before we close this out?
Just come on up.
All right, Finney, right now, nothing about the substance at this time. I just wondered, um, when this thing is done, what's the bottom line? How much did it cost us?
This consulting report?
$80,000.
Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns? Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for folks from various committees that are here tonight. Okay, let's see. I think all we have left are individual selectmen's reports.
Okay, well, let's see. I'm gonna go ahead and bring those together.
I could just say that we had a meeting of the Falmouth Affordable Housing, no, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group today and specifically looking at the Gifford Street. uh, and specifically looking at the Gifford Street workforce housing, their second phase. They've just broken ground just recently on the first phase, which is ten units, but they wanna think already about the second ten units, which they hope, if things go well, might get started as early as November of twenty-twenty, which is roughly a year from now. But, um, uh, needless to say, the fund is broke right now, except for the amount that we've already approved, uh, which is a sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's just one of the units of the ten that are under construction now. Now, uh, there will be additional funds, we hope, coming from CPC, and an article that will come up for April Town meeting. But, uh, basically, they're asking us right now to make a kind of a town commitment to supporting this project into this next phase. Um, and so that, I know we had to write a, a supportive letter and send it out today because there was a deadline. It really, literally was at four o'clock. But just wanted to let you know that that deliberation is ongoing, and the, the working group was wholeheartedly in, in support of it because we see that there will be revenues coming through CPC, um, in time for April Town meeting. And we should be able to allocate, from the needs assessment that was done in last March, you know, housing was considered to be the top need in the town that has to be addressed. So, we think that CPC will place a priority on making sure that this, the subsidies that are required to see this project through are actually allocated. So, just wanted to report on that.
Thank you, Steve.
So, I guess, uh, so last Thursday, I attended a group SMART meeting down at Woods Hole, and we had Steve Tupper from the Cape Cod Commission explaining transportation issues. And our question was, how do we, uh, deal with transportation issues that extend beyond our boundaries of Falmouth? Like with regard to, uh, transportation of, uh, vehicles through Falmouth going to the Vineyard. That's out of our jurisdiction, and also this, um, New Bedford planning. There's not a lot we can do to impact that. I had previously asked the Steamship Authority to, you know, get involved with the grant funding for the, the pier in New Bedford. They were willing to write a letter, but not actually fund anything, so. Anyways, Mr. Tupper and others at the meeting suggested that perhaps we get either Mass Maritime or some other group to do another transportation study, like similar to what they did in years past, which proved in their, uh, evaluation that the, uh, New Bedford freight was viable. And then, uh, if we get a, another study like that updated, maybe take that to the, um, Transportation Secretary in Massachusetts and start with that. And maybe that's a good thing to do for some, uh, future planning, so taking that under advisement. I also attended the Marx Building Committee meeting. They've been meeting regularly, and they're preparing to, uh, present to us their status on December sixteenth. So, they've made a lot of progress without a lot of, uh, you know, not a lot of expense to the town doing their own work.
Yes, a lot of expertise on that group, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. They've taken a lot of time to go around and look at the details of the moldings in that building and just kind of documenting what's there in regard to what's historically, uh, important. And then on, uh, Sunday, uh, was it Saturday? We attended, Julian and I were both there at the, uh, Community College, uh, presentation by Sierra Club about environmental issues and, um, where government agencies stand with regard to, uh, progress with regard to environmental issues and what types of entities might be opposed to those issues. So, it was an interesting, uh, study of the dynamics between some sorts of municipal efforts kind of in conflict with some other type of, uh, large business interests. So, it was interesting to get their take on it, of course. They're the environmental side, so. But, you know, it's always good to learn more, so that's what I did this week.
Interesting. Pass. Um, I'm gonna pass other than to say, on Sunday at the Falmouth Service Center, they, um, people donated almost eight hundred and fifty turkeys. They donated hams, pies. There were hundreds of volunteers. Uh, we know that, um, you know, despite the fact that people see our town as a vacation spot, there are many, many families and individuals who, um, are dealing regularly with, you know, hunger and not having those needs met. So, to be able to say that probably everybody, um, who needs it in our community will have that sort of special, um, you know, meal for Thanksgiving is enormous. I think a huge testament to everything that they do at the service center, um, and just, you know, really in particular, thinking about Brenda Swain and how, you know, she really was one of the individuals who kind of just grew that service center into what it is today, which is just, I was there for an event last week or the week before, and it's so beautiful. It's so dignified. You walk in and it looks like a beautiful grocery store that you would go to in any place. And, you know, people in there just being able to, you know, get those basic necessities and beyond basic necessities. There's some really amazing stuff that's in there. Um, never mind all the resources that they do, you know, that they have for people for issues around housing, job retraining. Um, it's just such an asset, and obviously, people know that because they turned out really just in enormous numbers on, um, Sunday. So, um, just a, a very big happy Thanksgiving and a huge thank you to all those people who donated to our friends and neighbors. It can be any one of us at any time, and, um, to be able to know that your community is there to support you is just, just a really important thing, especially for those kids that, um, you know, wanna have that special day on Thanksgiving with their families.
Let me mention that, uh, the service center also provides, um, support to the, the families on the base.
Yes.
Because they do not get adequate, it's a similar kind of constraint. They don't get an adequate salary. They have to pay for their housing, but they're pretty short on any kind of discretionary or, you know, just the necessities of purchasing and that. So, uh, our service center actually does provide services.
They do the fresh market there, which is really wonderful, yeah, and others.
Fresh market is there. Yeah, so, um, you know, it's something that I know has grown over the last four or five years, and it's just, uh, another kudo to the service center and how they're reaching out to support me. And just, you know, just a fact you mentioned, it's, it's not obvious how many people, you know, are struggling to get by in this community. But, you know, the East Falmouth Elementary School, fifty percent of the children there are on free and reduced lunch, and that's an indicator of how many people need those kinds of support services in this community.
When the government shutdown happened last year?
That's right.
They doubled their efforts to help the military families because they needed it.
They didn't have any salaries.
Thank you. Mr. Sussell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, work continues internally on the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget. And as the board members are aware, per our protocol, this, uh, proposed budget will be transmitted to Selectmen later in December for your review and consideration at the first two meetings, uh, in January, and then transmittal, of course, to the Finance Committee for their deliberative work. As a reminder, a Falmouth traditional, traditional holidays by the sea event begins on Friday evening, December sixth, including the Saturday evening downtown holiday stroll and letting of the town common on December seventh, and of course culminates with the annual, uh, Falmouth Christmas Parade on Sunday, December eighth. The two scheduled business meetings for the month of December for the board are Monday, December ninth, and Monday, December sixteenth. And as a re- further reminder, Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed on, uh, this Thursday, November twenty-eighth, and Friday, November twenty-ninth in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And, uh, my wishes to, for a happy Thanksgiving to all. Thank you.
Peter, God?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.